Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to our Livonia City Council Candidate Forum presented by the Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce. My name is Dan West, the Chamber President, and I will moderate this evening's program. This forum is designed to be an informational program to give Livonia's business people and residents the chance to learn more about the candidates running for four seats on the Livonia City Council in an election taking place Tuesday, November 4th. The Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce is a nonpartisan, nonprofit trade organization that represents more than 1,200 businesses and organizations within the business communities serving Michigan's eighth and ninth largest cities. The Chamber does not make any candidate endorsements. We thank our audience today gathered here in the auditorium or watching either on their cable or streaming feeds this program live and in the rebroadcast. We are grateful for the work of Livonia City Television Crew for broadcasting this forum so others can watch tonight's feed in the weeks ahead leading up to the election. For those interested in wanting to watch the rebroadcast, it'll be rebroadcast on the city's cable access channels and the city's YouTube channels in the weeks ahead. The format for this forum and the opening questions were developed by the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee. This forum will last about 90 minutes. Members of the audience are invited to ask questions of the city council candidates by submitting them on three-by-five cards and handing them to -- we have a couple of Chamber volunteers today. We've got Jane and we've got Jackie who will collect them. The submissions will be screened to prevent questions that are redundant and accurate or personal. We will ask as many audience questions as time permits this evening. With that, it's time to meet the eight candidates running for the four seats on Livonia City Council. I will introduce them in alphabetical order. They are Patrick Brockway, James Hooper, Kaylee Kavanaugh Reed, Steve King, Eileen McDonnell, Kathleen McIntyre, Jennifer O'Connor, and Robin Persicconi. Please welcome our candidates this evening. The top three finishers will earn a four-year term on the council and the fourth-place finisher will earn a two-year term on the council for terms that begin on January 1st, 2026. A council member holds a part-time position on the city's seven-member legislative body. The top overall vote getter will also earn the position of City Council President and Mayor Pro Tempore for the next two years. Each candidate will be invited to make a one-minute opening statement and a one-minute closing statement. The candidates will have up to one minute to respond to each question. Each candidate is also allowed a one-thirty-second rebuttal after they've answered a question to respond to a comment on the same question by an opponent. The candidates are arranged in order of numbers that were drawn prior to this forum. Accordingly, we will rotate the order in which each candidate responds first. Again, we ask that everyone please silence their phones so we can get into the forum. We have Laura Tamouch and Dawn Smith in the front row who serve as our timekeepers and inform the candidates of how much time they have left. With that, we will begin our forum. We'll begin with Kathleen McIntyre with your opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Chamber and to everyone taking the time to watch this forum. I'm Kathleen McIntyre, born and raised in Livonia and former city council president. I've been active in our community since returning here in 1996 through the Livonia Community Foundation, the Chamber, and the Senior Alliance. My vision for Livonia is simple. One, keep Livonia safe. Two, keep Livonia prosperous. Three, keep Livonia welcoming. This means supporting our first responders, creating a climate where businesses grow, jobs are created, and making sure that Livonia works for everyone. Livonia has big decisions ahead and experience matters. You've invested a lot in our city. You deserve less shouting, less anger. You deserve more respect and more results. You know me, you know my record, and you know I've delivered for you. I'm Kathleen McIntyre. Learn more at macintyreforcouncil.com. I look forward to tonight's discussion and keeping Livonia moving forward together.
Kaylee Kavanaugh Reed, your opening statement.
I am Kaylee Kavanaugh Reed. I am a mom, a wife, a daughter, a friend, but just as important, I am your hard-working neighbor. Born and raised here in Livonia, I started serving the people of Livonia as a Parks and Rec Camp Counselor. Post-college, I waitressed at Senate Coney Island, then became an executive assistant and then a chief of staff. In the past three years, I have had the best job in Livonia, serving as the Executive Director of the Livonia Spree. I've had the honor of organizing one of our city's most cherished events. I manage a half-a-million-dollar budget, oversee more than 100 vendor contracts, and I coordinate over 500 volunteers over a six-day period. And while I'm proud of the community spirit we build every June, I'm even more proud of how I have modernized the event, made it more inclusive, and have worked with the board to reinvest into Livonia through grants and donations. I love the people of Livonia, and serving as a city councilwoman is the next step to ensure that my hard work and love of the city are turned into action to better our city and continue us on a trajectory of an amazing place to live.
Thank you. Patrick Brockway, your opening statement, please.
Good evening, Livonia, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight's forum, to my fellow candidates for being here, and to the residents joining us in the audience and watching from home. My name is Patrick Brockway, and I'm running for Livonia City Council to be your go-to candidate who always puts residents first. For me, this campaign is about listening, working together, and making sure the people of Livonia drive our decisions. I look forward to sharing my ideas with you tonight and earning your trust and support. Thank you.
Robin Persicconi, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, and thank you to the Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce for hosting this evening's forum. My name is Robin Persicconi, and I'm running for city council. I'm a lifelong Livonia resident, a wife, a mother, a small-business owner here in Livonia, a practicing attorney, and an active community member currently serving as the Vice President of the Livonia Housing Commission and as the President-elect for the Livonia Rotary Noon Club. I'm running because I believe local elections matter the most. They shape the communities we raise our families in, the roads that we drive on, the parks that we enjoy, and the public safety that we depend on. I love this city, and I believe we can do better. I'm ready to serve Livonia, not just as a leader, but as someone who lives here, works here, and who wants the very best for our future. It'd be an honor to earn your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you for your opening statement. Jenny O'Connor.
Good evening. Thank you to the Chamber for hosting us all tonight. I'm Jenny O'Connor. I'm a lifelong resident of Livonia, a mom of two, and will be celebrating my 15th marriage anniversary tomorrow. I work as a design director for a small, local architectural millwork company where I work collaboratively as part of various teams on both large and small projects managing budgets, schedules, and deadlines. My 20-year career has taught me the importance of listening, collaboration, and fiscal responsibility, qualities that I believe are essential for city council. I'm running because I want our city to remain a community where our families can thrive, businesses can grow, and residents can feel safe and heard. We face real challenges, from keeping our public safety department staffed to repairing infrastructure, to managing growth responsibly, and those require thoughtful, transparent leadership. I've built my career on bringing people together with different perspectives to find creative solutions, and I'm hoping I can bring that same collaborative approach to our city council. And for more questions, people can reach me at jenniocconner.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen McDonnell, your opening statement, please.
Good evening. I'm Eileen McDonnell, candidate for Livonia City Council. I'd like to thank the Livonia Westland Chamber for hosting us tonight. My husband Bob and I have been residents in the city of Livonia for 29 years. We're grateful to call Livonia our home. We've raised our children here. Professionally, I was a municipal contract and proposal manager for a global chemical company, and I was also a trustee on the Livonia School Board for five years. Running for council was a decision that my husband Bob and I really took a hard look at and discussed a lot. We knew that was going to be something that took a lot of hard work and sacrifice, but we decided that Livonia needed my talents. We really need to work and try to reshape our city. Collectively, council needs to be comprised of seven members who will ensure that the citizens' voices are heard, and I hear you. I will listen, I will do my best, and I will be your advocate. Thank you.
James Hooper, your opening statement, please.
Greetings, everyone. My name is James Hooper. First of all, I want to take a moment and thank all of the voters who, in the primary, allowed me to continue on and to be up here for this opportunity to speak and to hopefully represent you in November. Who I am? I'm just a blue-collar guy. I was born and raised on the east side of Detroit, right by the city airport. I used to ride the bus downtown and work in Eastern Market. I worked in Eastern Market for many years, working up to being the dispatcher at the place that I worked at. From there, I got into construction trades, and I worked almost 20 years in construction trades, which gave me the opportunity to serve in Liberia, West Africa. There's three things that I see: value, quality, and opportunity. I see them in people, places, ideas, and situations. That is what I bring to council. Thank you.
And Steve King, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for coming out tonight. My name is Steve King, and I have been in Livonia three years before they built Bates. So, a lot of folks refer to me as the OG because I've been here so long. And like James, I want to thank the voters that made it possible for me to be here tonight. I ran third in the primary out of 16 candidates. Typically, in Livonia, the primary repeats in the general election. If that was true, I would have a seat on council. But can't take anything for granted. And so, I especially want to thank my team. I have a great team that worked very hard to make sure that I got here, and I want people out in Livonia to join my team because I need your help. And I want you to go to my website, kingforlivonia.com, hit the donate button, please, because we got here on a shoestring budget, but we're not going to get a council seat. We're going to have to spend a lot of money. I'm going to need your help doing that, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, our first question of the evening. I'll ask it twice. What do you think are the city's biggest public safety issues? What do you think are the city's biggest public safety issues? And we'll turn to Ms. Reed for that.
Thank you. That's a great question. So, when I was meeting with the different organizations seeking out endorsements for this process, when I met with the firefighters, they were discussing how they are understaffed, and we know that very well, but they are getting under the impression and get the vibe that they should be prioritizing a less expensive type of EMS worker, EMS over a paramedic worker. And I think that is a huge problem because if they can only do so much as an EMS worker, EMT, I should say, versus a paramedic worker can do more in that ambulance. So, I think that is a huge issue right now for our fire departments, and they want to be able to hire the type of personnel that they want.
Mr. Brockway.
One of the biggest concerns that I found when speaking, like Kaylee had mentioned, speaking with the fire department, is the staffing levels currently. Our firefighters have roughly 80-plus employees, and it's way too low given the amount of people that we have. We have a population of roughly 94,000 and change compared to a city like Dearborn that has a little bit more than us, where in Livonia, they do about 13,000 to 14,000 runs a year with 89 personnel and with equipment and infrastructure that needs repairs versus other cities of a similar size that are well-staffed with, say, 150 personnel. So, one of the biggest concerns is getting the staffing level there. That may require a change in the charter, but really what's going to have to come down to is investing in our first responders and getting the equipment they need to be safe in order to keep our community safe.
Mrs. Persicconi.
Thank you. This is a really important question, and public safety is a top priority for me. I met with the leadership directly myself. I sat down and met with police and fire, and I listened to what their concerns were. So, first and foremost, I'm not going to presume that I know everything. I'm going to listen to what our first responders are saying that their issues are, and I'm going to listen to them. It was made clear to me that I think that we have to be competitive with our surrounding communities with respect to our benefits and compensation packages. This is where I think that we can do a better job of recruiting and retaining our first responders, and I'm fully committed to supporting those needs to the best of my ability when I'm on council. What's an important thing that I would like to address also is that it's very important to make sure that we are retaining that top talent, that once they come to Livonia, they don't want to leave Livonia. So, I am committed to that, and that is what I think we need to work on moving forward in Livonia.
Mrs. O'Connor.
After a meeting with the police and the firefighters' unions, they echo the same thing: staffing and retention are top concerns. Officers and firefighters are stretched too thin, and our compensation and pension packages are not competitive with surrounding areas or federal opportunities. We're losing officers to Homeland Security, which is offering really large sign-on bonuses right now. There's no simple solution, but we can be innovative. We can create recruitment pipelines, supporting retention programs, and exploring incentives to attract families to live and work here. Earlier this summer, I wrote a 10-page-long workforce development plan for our firefighters. This is a two-year-long program that would go into the high schools and go through the junior and senior year. I've submitted that to the firefighters' union and reviewed it with other leaders as well. As a council member, I would listen directly to first responders about their challenges and collaborate on practical and fiscally responsible solutions. Our goal has got to be to keep our city safe while respecting taxpayers and supporting those who serve us every day. Thank you.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Thank you. I, too, like some of our other candidates, did review and just talk to our first responders, police and fire, and retention is so critical in our police department. They have lost 18 officers over the last six weeks, and that's huge. So, what they're finding is that these officers, once they're here, they go to other departments because of the retirement health savings that they are being offered in other communities. That's a problem, so we need to find and address that issue. And secondly, fire department is staffing based on the time when Ed McNamara was in office. We had a lot less, we had probably the same number of people, but we have a lot more people coming in and out of Livonia on a daily basis.
Okay. Mr. Hooper.
This is an excellent question. If you think everyone knows the analogy of, you know, the professor's in front of the room, and he's got a bucket, and he's trying to squeeze all these things into the bucket. One of the biggest things that you have, one of the biggest building blocks for any successful community is going to be your first responders and how they are treated. I am firmly believing that we need to take excellent care of our first responders. I think most people here have worked for different bosses. You've worked for excellent bosses, and you've worked for some who are not so good. And it's really, when you're talking about retention, the number-one issue is culture within an organization. And if you have a problem retaining people, you really need to look at the culture in that organization first and foremost. One thing that we can look at specifically is retention bonuses. Did you flash the time? Thank you.
Mr. King.
Yeah, I'm going to disagree a little bit with the folks up here. When I sat down with the firefighters, they told me there's 84 working for over the manpower requirement by the charter, so manpower is not an issue. Technology, training, is what they need. They said, you know, buildings don't fight fires. Same with the police. Police say, "Buildings don't fight crime." They want technology, they want training. And right now, 65% of our budget goes to first responders. So, you're talking about more money, more money, more money. We're already at 65%. So, I believe with technology, we can give the first responders the tools they need, make their job safer, make them work smarter, and do it fiscally responsibly. Thank you.
Mrs. McIntyre.
Thank you. I am very proud to say that I have the endorsement of both the firefighters and the police unions. I've been very invested in our public safety department since I first started on council 10 years ago. We do have issues with staffing. We also have issues with facilities. There are a lot of reasons that the village failed. Unfortunately, one of the consequences was we are not going to get the facilities that we need for the police, a new police station, and we're not going to be able to upgrade the fire stations as we needed to. They don't fit our equipment, and the female firefighters right now change their clothes in closets. Morale is always an issue, and, thank you, Dawn, and funding is always going to be an issue. 65% of the budget is not an unreasonable figure because it's 65% does not mean that it's too much.
All right, our next question, and we'll begin with Mr. Brockway on this one. I'll ask it twice. There have been several complex development proposals before city council in recent years. How will you handle such matters realizing there are residents who fear change and an interest for the city to pursue smart economic development? There have been several complex development proposals before city council in recent years. How will you handle such matters realizing there are residents who fear change and an interest for the city to pursue smart economic development? Mr. Brockway.
This is an incredibly relevant question considering some of the items that have been on the agenda at recent meetings, including the proposal for the Sheets gas station on Eight Mile and Newburgh. So, you have a perfect example of, you have, from a development perspective, you have a business coming in there, which would mean an increase in tax revenue for the city, which on its face value is a good thing. However, you also have resident input that states that they don't want that facility there to the sum of about 95% of the individuals that reside in the immediate three neighborhoods within the vicinity of Sheets. So, that's the balance there, and I think that's an issue that every council member has to find, is a balance between law, regulations, and the needs of the people. However, when it comes down to it, as a representative on the council, you work for the people. If the people are speaking up saying, "We do not want this gas station in our backyard," you have to consider, even if you don't live anywhere near there, you have to consider their feelings on there. You have to consider, the residents are the ones that it impacts the most. Thank you.
Mrs. Persicconi.
Thank you. So, this is a very complicated question again, and paramount to this is being able to treat people respectfully and have civic discourse, which is unfortunately lacking in our society today. As a council member, I am committed to making sure that citizens feel heard, and I think that is something that is paramount when you're dealing with these types of issues. So, if we do have a situation where there's a development proposal and there's opposition to it, we have to make sure we're giving residents an opportunity to voice their opinions. We have to make sure that our residents are being heard and that they're being listened to. But we also have to make very difficult decisions sometimes for our city. We have to be able to balance individual property rights and development owners' rights with the will and the wants of the community. So, it's going to be very difficult to make everybody happy all of the time, but hopefully, as a council member, we will get it right most of the time so that, thank you very much.
Okay. Mrs. O'Connor.
Thank you. I do understand that because of the culture of our city, we do have a lot of resistance to change, and as city council people, it's going to be incredibly crucial for us to find a way to strike a balance between gathering facts, being thoughtful, making careful decisions, and then listening to voters. I think that it becomes really easy for people to start distorting bigger-picture ideas, and then there becomes a difficult challenge of people having to have thoughtful conversations. So, a big part of what I do in my day job is having thoughtful conversations about very complex projects, looking at things from every angle, and then working constructively and collaboratively towards a solution, which is exactly the type of spirit I hope to bring to city council. Thank you.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Thank you. A real clear, good example of change and progress is the corner of Seven Mile in Farmington, where the old Kmart building sat for years empty. The Scho stack family came to council, oh, probably about a year and a half ago, with a proposal. The people in the neighborhood were not receptive. They wanted apartments that were, like, three stories high, budding up to their backyards, and it just wasn't a fit. So, Scho stack worked with the neighbors, worked with council and the administration, and found a compromise that really, really made everybody happy. So, I think the key to everything as being a council member is to listen and to be able to let the people voice their opinions. Thank you.
Mr. Hooper.
On the subject of developments here in Livonia, recently, there's been two phenomenal projects that are going on. My fellow candidate, Eileen, mentioned one, Seven in Farmington. That sat vacant for many, many years, and it was just an eyesore for this community. The second one is the old Comerica site. Both of these are being developed now, and they're going to be very viable properties. If we're referencing the defeated facilities, village proposal, Livonia has a record, a track record, of approaching things in a more of a tapas-type approach, meaning à la carte. You're going to tackle one thing at a time. That's what I would focus on. Let's look at one thing, let's take care of that very well, and then let's move on to the next. We don't need to have a big, beautiful bill and try and squeeze everything into it all at one time.
Mr. King.
Yeah, I think, first of all, you have to start as a city being proactive. I know Oakland County pursues the businesses they want in their community. They went after biomedical, and they went after about 10 other things, and they're the most prosperous county in the United States, as opposed to waiting for another car wash or a chicken shop or whatever, which, that's how we approach everything. So, we have to be proactive, go get the people we want, and then we have to listen to the community. The village was a perfect example. They didn't listen. They got crushed. They didn't listen. Now, as far as the Sheets go, I want to address that. I just cruised around Livonia and found six other alternative sites: the old Frank sites at Inkster and School Craft, the Logan Steakhouse is closed, Merriman and 96, 96 northwest of School, Trafalgar, and Stark. These are all excellent locations for the Sheets. I would like to see them come into our community in the right spot. Thank you.
Mrs. McIntyre.
Thank you, Dan. First, I'm very proud that I was part of the Master Plan Committee that comprehended the need and pursued the need for new kinds of zoning that allows multi-use developments like we're seeing at Seven in Farmington, and also very proud that I was part of the council that approved the new zoning ordinance that codifies and legally allows those things. People mentioned the Seven in Farmington. That was a great example of collaboration. When developers come in and they work with the council, and the council works together, and you don't have individuals who go freelance by themselves, but the council works together, works with the administration, works with the developer, works with our planning commission, and the developers are willing to meet with the community and listen to residents and fine-tune plans with pressure from council and the planning commission, you end up with very, very good projects like we are seeing, and everyone, I think, is going to cite Farmington and Seven and the old Comerica site. So, thank you.
Mrs. Reed.
So, we all know change is scary, but I find that when people have all of the facts explained to them, they're less scared. In my work, we've had to make a lot of changes that the board was resistant to, some of our vendors were resistant to, but as I was able to be the liaison between the vendors and our board, much like I think council should be between the citizens and the developers, when you meet in the middle, you're able to get people to agree and to see the facts on both sides. So, I think as a council, we do need to be open to different types of communication so we are hearing everyone, including, I know it's more technically difficult, but Zoom, because not everyone can get to these meetings, and we need to be able to hear everyone. And we need to actually not just hear them and make them feel like they're being listened to, but take what they're saying and put it into action.
Right. For our next question, we'll start with Mrs. Persicconi. I'll ask a question twice. Voters made it clear they did not support this summer's bond issue for redeveloping the Civic Center campus, but analysts have said the city still has some $100 million in maintenance and repairs needed for city facilities over the next 10 years. How will you engage a community to build support for future funding initiatives to address these infrastructure issues? Again, voters made it clear that they did not support this summer's bond issue for redeveloping the Civic Center campus, but analysts have said the city has some $100 million in maintenance and repairs needed for the city facilities for the next 10 years. How will you engage the community to build support for future funding initiatives to address these infrastructure issues? Mrs. Persicconi.
Thank you, Dan. Well, I think it's definitely going to be imperative that we find a path forward that makes sense and that earns the public trust with regard to this particular issue. The voters have clearly spoken on the issue of the village, and I respect the decision that was made. So, moving forward, we've got to find a solution that strikes that balance between the will of the community and the need to address the conditions of our facilities. As far as engagement with the community, that's going to be a critical component. As far as engagement with the community, that's going to be a critical component. I propose that we do some of the things that were done during the primary campaign. We do things as a city, as a city hosting town halls, having social media surveys, finding ways to connect with commuting members, going to the community, going out into the community, and being proactive in that regard. We need to find a pragmatic and fiscally responsible approach. Once we do that, and we need to prioritize what has to be done first. With respect to funding, we need to explore ways to use our current resources and also search for state and federal grants. Thank you.
Ms. O'Connor.
Thank you. The voters have spoken, and I respect that, but as you know, our challenges haven't gone away. We still have leaky roofs, outdated safety systems in facilities that don't meet ADA requirements. Moving forward, we need to take a step back and listen to residents' feedback. We need to find a plan that better balances fiscal responsibility with the urgent needs of public safety and accessibility. From an engagement standpoint, I think that outreach is going to be crucial here, and I think that we need to look at approaches that haven't been looked at previously. The town halls and the things like that are important, but we need to find a more creative approach where people feel like their voices are being heard and they're being listened to. And then I would like to say that I do remain committed to working collaboratively with residents, city leaders, and the experts to ensure that we're able to develop a plan that earns trust and addresses these very real problems. Doing nothing is not an option. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. I think the voters and the people in this community spoke very loudly that their voices needed to be heard first before any proposal was actually placed on the ballot. I was here on the night when the mayor and Plant Moran came out and explained the program. They did the slides, they did the presentations, and I just looked at it and thought, "This is too much. It's too much." I just felt in my heart that it was just not the right proposal. And people that I've talked to along the campaign trail have more indicated that they would definitely support fire and police and improving our buildings, but they just wanted to see more green space, and they really wanted to be heard and have more input into the decision process before it goes to the voters. Thank you.
Mr. Hooper.
So on the defeated bond proposal, again, in my opinion, and I believe the opinion of many of the voters that I spoke to, too much was wrapped up at one time in one bill, in one proposal. And it was just too big, too much, all at once. I'm very happy to see that the current council has addressed the need to have a capital infrastructure manager. That is one of the pieces of the puzzle that's been missing for many, many years in this city, someone who is dedicated to making sure that our capital infrastructure buildings are maintained as they need to. In regards to how to involve the public, if you go to my website, hooperforlivonia.com, you will find a "Get Involved" column right there, and please go and see that. Thank you.
Mr. King.
Yeah, I want to touch on Seven Mile in Farmington. I was home watching the council meeting when the petitioner came forward with this proposal of the Myers, and they were going to use panel brick, substandard materials, horrible stuff. The petitioner's from West Bloomfield. It wouldn't fly where in his own community. So I rushed up here, addressed the council, pointed that out, and they made changes. They made changes. But it took somebody to push them, somebody to point out what panel brick even was. So I disagree that the council's up here as experts, knowing what's going on. As far as moving forward, Millage defeated, let's move forward. $43 million earmarked for a new city hall. My plan, get on my website, I'm going to repurpose the old courthouse, turn it into the new city hall. Forty people work in city hall. It'll hold every one of them. And then address police and fire now. Redo the police station, the fire stations, wrap it up.
Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you, and I believe the question was about moving forward with finding funding for our buildings and our infrastructure. First of all, the $100 million for all of our buildings, that problem got identified with an initiative by the mayor, supported by council. Over the 75 years that Livonia has been a city, in the last five to six decades, 50 to 60 years, we've had growth. And when you grow and you add new facilities and new services, you grow buildings. And we had never taken an inventory of all of these buildings because they had been added by administrations and councils over the years. So that Plant Moran study was for the first time to understand if we were to bring every one of those facilities up to where it should be, would be about $100 million. There are facilities that we do not need, and that's one of the first things that we need to do is identify which facilities we don't need and do not need to be maintained, can be brought down. I'm not talking about any specific facilities. And then the second thing is to look at the revenue we've got and to understand what the most pressing needs are.
Mrs. Reed.
So in the past nine months, talking to residents, or I guess not nine months, but discussing with the residents about the Millage, they were feeling, the two main things I was hearing was that they wanted the ADA compliant bathrooms, buildings done, and they wanted police and fire to have safer, better training buildings. So I think a way to get these residents engaged and get them to trust us is let's take the money that was allocated for the city hall bond, the 2.4 million, and start working on making the buildings ADA compliant, start working with police and fire, what are the lower hanging fruit that we can take care of in their buildings, and we will get the residents trusting us and more engaged. And from there, we can then explore different ways to get their feedback on doing another Millage down the line. I'm not saying within the next year, but those were the two biggest things I was hearing, and if we want residents to trust the administration, we need to act on those two things.
Mr. Brockway.
Okay. With the Millage being voted down, and I say voted down, it got dunked on, okay? The entire yes initiative was just crushed. And that's because the people saw through the guise of progress but without a clear plan, without a clear budget, and the use of police and fire and dangling that in front of everybody to say, "Oh, hey, if you want to support police and fire, then you need to support all these other things." Okay? The citizens of Livonia have said, "Don't do that again," okay? Because people are watching that. But we have to move forward, and we do have to find a way to kind of cover the corrections of the past, and we need to utilize grants. The finance committee, I believe there was a request to see how many grants have actually been written by Livonia. We got people in town that could be doing grants for us that I don't think we're using. We need to allocate the funds that were going to be used for the city hall in order to get the firefighters and the police what they need now, kind of to echo Steve King's comment there. We need to remove ancillary costs in order to help with the budget. Thank you.
All right. Our next question, we'll start this with Ms. O'Connor. What will you do to calm contentious political discourse and build common ground to resolve issues in the city? What will you do to calm contentious political discourse and build common ground to resolve issues in our city? We'll start with Ms. O'Connor.
Thank you. Trust in our local government starts with listening. Our residents need to know that their voices matter, not just during campaign season, but all season long. I've always shown up at neighborhood meetings, at community events, and in conversations where people have hard questions. This is the kind of council member I intend to be. Engagement also means transparency, making sure that residents understand not just what decisions are made, but why they're being made. I hope to bring experience because I can help build consensus in complex projects, which is what I do in my day job. And I know that collaboration is how you get lasting results, when you bring many minds to the table and you reach coalition. I want every resident to feel that they have a seat at the table in shaping our city's future.
Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. Would you mind repeating the question, please?
What will you do to calm contentious political discourse and build common ground to resolve issues in our city?
All right. Thank you. It's funny, Mr. Hooper and I were having a little conversation about how the people in this community really need to get back together and back to basics, not even just on the local level, but at state and federal levels. We really need to start going back to basics, and number one, we need communication between our governments. We need to be able to trust our governments, that they're doing the right things for us. And we just need to be engaging our neighbors, our friends, and put ourselves in their shoes if they have a difference of opinion. It's something that we truly need to change. So, thank you.
Mr. Hooper.
So one of my heroes growing up was a character named Atticus Finch. And if you read To Kill a Mockingbird, then you know who I'm speaking of. And one of his things in this book, To Kill a Mockingbird, was always, it's taking perspective, others' perspectives, and walking a mile in their shoes. It's not what we can do, it's what I've already been doing when I've held events. I had four community conversations, and I invited all the candidates to be there and to speak. I don't care what side of the aisle you were on, at my event, you were given the opportunity to introduce yourself to the voters and speak about it. Everyone that was there was welcome to get up and say first what they liked about Livonia, and then tell your issue. Speak, and let us all hear, and then we'll move forward from there. So it's what I've already been doing. Thank you.
Mr. King.
Yeah, I want to circle back to the $100 million. I read the 767-page report, and I take issue with it. Obviously, I'm a builder, I'm probably the only one up here who can draw a blueprint and read a blueprint, but it's inflated just ridiculously. So that I wanted to address. The ADA bathrooms, I'm meeting with Senator Mary Kavanaugh Friday to address the fact that she got a grant for ADA bathrooms, and we have not used that money for that purpose. So we're going to discuss that. As far as getting together as a community, I am out in the community every day, walking the streets of Livonia, going door-to-door, meeting people. I have been the public eye my entire life. Many of you people have seen me on stage, you've seen me on a soccer field, you've seen me on a basketball court, and you have to engage one-on-one, and that's how you bring back civic discourse. You get to know each other. Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre.
Well, I'm proud of my history as a uniter and calming contention and finding common ground. We had a lot of contention this year because there was a very hotly contested Millage issue that was tied with the primary election with 19 candidates. During 2020 and 2021, when we had COVID issues and we had the George Floyd situation and protests, that was contention. And the meetings were contentious, and it was a very, very difficult time. All of us on council didn't agree with how to address the, we didn't agree on everything, but as the leader of the time at the council, I listened to my colleagues, I worked with my colleagues, and I was very, very engaged with everyone in the community. I talked to everyone. There was no one that I didn't talk to, they didn't agree with me, they said hateful things. I reached out to people. And you stand your ground, you make it clear that you listen, you work with everyone, and you will prevail. Common sense and calmness and knowledge prevails. Thank you.
Mrs. Reed.
So I have a good reputation of being able to work with everyone. If you visit my website, you'll see I have endorsements from both sides of the aisle, multiple different groups. But I think we need to recognize that there is a big difference in constructive criticism and just hate. And I think we need to bring more positivity to our meetings and the feedback that the council is receiving, and we need to make sure that we're making everyone feel heard when they're being constructive. And I think my positivity, I'm able to get people to get on board with that type of rhetoric, but I think as leaders in the city, we just need to stop letting people spew the hate. I think it starts with us, and we got to end it.
Mr. Brockway.
I've worked for the federal government for 14 years as a public-facing employee. I know what it is to have someone look you right in the eye and just tell you what they really think about you, or even be spit on. So I understand that public discourse does occur, and I've learned over the last 14 years that you need to be calm, you need to show and engage in active listening. My campaign slogan, if you will, is cooperation, logic, and family. Through cooperation, discussion, discourse, these are things that it's okay to have conflict. Conflict sparks debate. It sparks growth. It removes you from the status quo. We can, it's okay to disagree with one another. We have to understand that disagreeing isn't inherently bad. So we need to come together and show some empathy, utilize logic, and come to a conclusion as best as we can.
Mrs. Persccone.
Thank you. So calming contentious discourse and building some common ground is something that I have a lot of practice with. My day job is being a lawyer. I'm an attorney, so every single day, I have clients that come to me with a problem, and every single day, I'm dealing with opposition on the other end, whether it's opposing council, the other person on the other side of the issue. And the overall goal is, it is never about me individually, it is always about the resolution or the solution to the problem that the client came to me. This is the exact type of role I would take as a council member. When, you have to take the approach that the residents of the city are electing you to do what's best for them. So in doing so, I am pledging to listen to the residents of the city and always work to find the resolution and the solution, and doing that in a respectful way, encouraging civic discourse, and ensuring that there will never be any offensive engagement. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Actually, now, we're about halfway through the point right now. Let's move into a kind of a lighthearted question, a chance to kind of get the candidates on a personal level, and we're going to start with Ms. McDonald on this one. But the question is, what were your extracurricular activities in school, and what did you like about them? Again, what were your extracurricular activities in school, and what did you like about them? Ms. McDonald.
Well, I was a band nerd, so I love marching band, I loved being part of the band. You know, I was on National Honor Society, so, you know, I wasn't a sports person at all. So, but I think those are those main things that I did. It was fun. It taught me to be a good student, it taught me that I had to manage my time, and, you know, I loved playing clarinet.
All right. Mr. Hooper.
So the picture that comes to my head when I'm hearing you read this question was, I think it was The Breakfast Club? So, and now I'm trying to envision each member up here as one of those characters, and it's making me laugh. I did not engage in professional sports in school, but we did like to play dodgeball and just have fun on the playground. Thank you.
Mr. King.
Yeah, I loved high school. Unfortunately, my children didn't. I tried to impress upon them how great high school was, and it's the easiest thing you're ever going to do in your life, go every day, hang out with your friends, and have a great time. And I was student council president, I won the Drama Award, I played sports, and I started my band, Steve King and the Diddlies, came out of a concert choir variety show, amazingly, 1971. And actually, right now, I'm building a band to do Vegas New Year's Eve. So over 10,000 gigs, 54 years playing. I actually got a career out of high school, which is pretty rare. And, yeah, high school was the best, and my kids later on, as they got older, said, "Yeah, Dad, we should have listened to you." You know, they did not like high school, like many teenagers, and they avoided everything. I tried to get them to, really, high school was the best. Okay.
Ms. McIntyre.
My extracurricular activities, this might surprise people, student government. From my first day at Stevenson High School through to my last, I loved it. We didn't have smock awards about who was most likely to end up running for city council in Livonia, but may have gotten that. Painting scenery for the Stevenson High School musicals. I loved the musicals. Stevenson had, and I'm sure still does, a phenomenal musical theater department and production. I couldn't act, I couldn't sing, but I was desperate to be part of it, and they'd let anybody paint scenery, so I did that. Attending everything, there weren't too many activities, dances, sporting events, whatever, that I missed. I was a good student, but it should have been more extracurricular, but one of my hobbies was probably talking too much in class.
Mrs. Reed.
So I went to Mercy High School, and I played varsity lacrosse and field hockey there, as well as I was... there, as well as I was really into, we had a whole series of religious retreats, specifically a retreat called Kairos. And I cannot tell you much about it, but if you've been on it, you know it's a secret. And I led Kairos quite a few times. And my favorite thing about field hockey and lacrosse is I'm super competitive. I like to run and I love beating people. So...
Mr. Brockway.
I went to high school at Divine Child in Dearborn. We actually just celebrated our 20-year reunion last Sunday, so to all the Falcons out there. So, I was kind of a mix of everything. I was a nerd, I was a jock, I played football, I wrestled, I was on the track team. Not as a runner, look at me, not as a runner, but as someone that was throwing. I was on the German club, I was on the chess club. And it was great, it kept me busy and I had a part-time job at the same, during the time. But it built friendships and it taught me responsibility.
Mrs. Perskoni.
Well, I really enjoyed high school. And I went to Stevenson and I had severe FOMO, like fear of missing out. So, I did everything. I was in sports, I swam, I did soccer, I was junior class president, student senate, I started the recycling club at Stevenson when I was there. And just had a really good time. So, I, yeah, that's really about it. That's my extracurriculars.
Mrs. O'Connor.
I love this question. I was Franklin, class of 2000, Franklin High School. And throughout the entire time I was there, I was very active in the choir and the theater. And my high school theater director was Angie Hillman. And she changed my life, as well as the lives of many other students that she affected during her career. She was lost much too soon. And my campaign sign, incidentally, the sun that's on there was inspired by her because she told all of us as students to be the light. And so, my goal is always to be the light for people around me, for my community. And I learned that from her in that theater. And that actually inspired my first degree. My second degree is what I do for a living, which is design. But my first degree is actually a theater degree. So, theater geek.
All right, thank you for that. Again, we just do that just to give people a little personal side to the candidates running. But we'll move back into the more serious stuff here. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Hooper on this one. There have been numerous complaints about rough roads and delayed snow removal along the many county-maintained roads in the city. How will you work with Wayne County to effectively to make improvements to the maintenance of Livonia's county roads? Again, there have been numerous complaints about the rough roads and delayed snow removal along the many county-maintained roads in the city. What will you do with Wayne County to effectively make improvements to maintain Livonia's county roads? Mr. Hooper.
Call Terry Morecki. I say that as a joke, but it's really not a joke. We have to work well with the county. We are, we are a donor community in Wayne County, meaning we put more tax dollars into Wayne County than we are receiving out. And I think we need to rattle that cage a little harder and a little more often to say, we need to get our fair share of county dollars back here to take care of our roads.
Mr. King.
Yeah, not just Terry, Glenn Anderson, we have other county commissioners, they all live in Livonia. And absolutely, you go talk to them, you go visit the county commission, and you become the squeaky wheel. The issue I have is there are a lot of driveways in Livonia that open to the main road. I have two approaches. So, that orange truck comes down with all this ice and snow and he drops it in my approach. It's like three feet deep, it's rock hard. So, what does Oakland County do? They have an appendage that you can put on your snowplow. So, as they're coming up to the approach, they drop the appendage and they don't drop anything in my approach. I'm capable physically of doing that, but there are thousands of people in Livonia that cannot clear that driveway. And then you have seniors getting stuck in their approach. So, those are the kind of ideas that I'm going to bring forward because I really notice a lot of things. Thank you.
Mrs. McIntyre.
Rough county roads, and Mr. Hooper really hit on a big part of the answer. As a city council, we do not have any special powers to hold the county accountable for anything in our city. The people that have the power to do that are the constituents of our Wayne County commissioners and also of the county executive. And there are a lot of avenues to make your voice heard with Wayne County. As an elected local leader, you can certainly encourage and make people understand that they have a voice as constituents, as I've done often, and also made them realize they have similar voices with the state, with state roads, and sometimes the federal government on federal government issues. But that's, it really comes down to advocating and encouraging and letting people know how you fix these problems. And that's going to your elected representatives for those jurisdictions.
Mrs. Reed.
So, majority of our county commissioners volunteer for me at the spree, so I have really good working relationships with them. But what I've learned is when I want someone to pick up the phone when I call, I need to be the one that starts answering for them. So, I think we need to bridge this really good, positive relationship with them. So, when our residents are coming to us saying, "Hey, I want these county roads fixed," I can pick up the phone and they will answer because I've answered their calls.
Mr. Brockway.
Much of what I'm going to say is going to echo what many of the candidates have already spoke of, but it's all about building that relationship with the county. As was mentioned, the council doesn't have the authority in order to make those direct changes, but we do have the ability to advocate, as has been mentioned, be an advocate. And that includes, and I'm not, I'm not an expert at road construction, but I am good at researching and review the types of changes in technology of roads, as well as the technology for, as Mr. King had mentioned, snowplow removal, and just being that advocate. And if that working relationship isn't reciprocated, then you, as an elected official in the city, do have a little bit of a platform to get people together to make those phone calls, you know, to the county. You know, 95,000 phone calls is rather hard to ignore over time.
Yes.
Mrs. Perskoni.
Thank you, Dan. Well, I'm happy to say that I do believe I have an excellent working relationship with our local county commissioners and with the other county commissioners that serve on Wayne County. And I would utilize that to continue to develop my relationship with them and find out if there are new avenues and other avenues that exist for trying to get more funds to come back to Livonia. As an elected official of Livonia, my priority will always be Livonia residents and what Livonia residents need and are looking for. So, I will fiercely advocate for our residents here in Livonia and hopefully try to find some new ways to get more funds to come back to our city. It is a problem. Livonia is seen as, you know, not an issue. We are a nice suburb of Wayne County. So, when they're looking at what Wayne County is going to do with those funds, we're kind of always put at the back burner because we're kind of not a issue. There's bigger issues that they're dealing with. That doesn't mean I'm still not going to go out and advocate fiercely for what is important to us.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Thank you. I've heard many residents mention our roads. This is a continued dialogue. And it's not just a quality-of-life issue, but it is a fiscal one as well. Fixing and maintaining our roads requires careful planning and prioritization. I would advocate for data-driven approach that evaluates our roads' conditions, traffic flow, and then also the coordination of long-term maintenance. There seems to be a lot of overlap with some of these projects where there seems like one hand isn't talking to the other about when certain things are closed and when they're going to be open. We also need to make sure that funds are earmarked for our infrastructure through the county and that they're being spent efficiently and with transparency so that our residents know where their tax dollars are going. I balance competing needs and limited budgets daily in my job, so I think it's going to be crucial for us to collaborate and work with our contacts at Wayne County to make sure that our infrastructure investments and our tax dollars are being responsibly and sustainably invested. Thank you.
Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. Well, we're all pretty happy for those of us who live over by Seven Mile, Seven Mile between Newburgh and Wayne Road are finally getting repaired. But I think the most important thing as a city council member and a representative of the city of Livonia is if citizens have concerns, to listen and to be their voice and take on the responsibility of reaching out to the county commissioners on behalf of the citizens because really it shouldn't, we work for the citizens. So, I think it's important for us to reach out and do that. You know, being a donor tax base for Wayne County, we put a lot of money out there. We should at least get, you know, some prioritization from the county. You know, it's not even just a, you know, getting it done, it's also a safety issue. Thank you.
All right, our next question, we'll begin with Mr. King on this one. And the question is, what is an issue that no one else is bringing up that you want to tackle? What is an issue that no one else is bringing up that you want to tackle? Mr. King.
Well, no one's bringing up the culture of how we do things in this city. If you come to the council meetings, time and time again, citizens come forward and they are begging for help. They're begging for help. And they come again and again and again. And the culture of the city, for some reason, ignores these people. I've been walking Silver Village, I finished walking Silver Village yesterday, I'm walking Newburgh Village today. There was a woman in Silver Village, they took her toilet, they left her with a five-gallon bucket. How is this okay? There's also a culture of, the default mode of every politician is secrecy. Nobody knows anything that's going on in this city. So, I invite you to follow my website. I wish you had come to my teach-in, I'm going to do another one because I'm the candidate that pulls back the curtain and shows you.
Mrs. McIntyre.
Well, that's an excellent question. I assume you mean bringing up in total in the campaign, not just tonight.
Just other things, other things that we haven't brought up tonight.
Well, I'm going to bring up blight. And this is an issue that I took some leadership on when I was on the council. I don't believe I was president, but took leadership on it. Blight is a very, very difficult issue and it changes the face of a community. And when you have private property like strip malls, unfortunately, that are abandoned, the city cannot go in and dictate to private property owners what they're going to do or what's going to go in there. We also have neighborhoods that are struggling with this. On the commercial side, we beefed up the fines and the penalties for not keeping your property up. On the residential side, there's a Stevenson Interact Club starting, they're a junior rotary, in fact, I talked to the rotary about this this morning. I think we have an opportunity to engage some of our high school students and clubs to help with neighborhood blight.
Mrs. Reed.
So, the play structures at the parks are very near and dear to me. I am there multiple times a week. I have three little boys under five. And on a lot of these play structures, they're usable, but they're not safe. And it has taken me calling and emailing Parks and Rec to let them know for someone to either come down and remove a swing because it's not safe anymore or a slide get blocked off. And I don't think it should have to take a resident bringing up the safety of these structures because a kid could go there without a parent and get injured. So, I think we need to have something, some sort of position where a person is going around, making sure that our parks are still safe and that we're not setting ourself up for a liability of someone getting injured.
Mr. Brockway.
One of the things that doesn't get brought up very often, but is a common occurrence and it can impact people every day, is just the simple services such as tree trimming, trimming the branches on trees that are, you know, owned by the city, that are by our sidewalks and communities. I've had multiple residents, many senior residents, but it can impact any resident, that says, "Hey, I'm going for my daily walk and I have to either walk to the side or I need to walk into the street." One person says that they rolled their ankle because they needed to get around the trees. Now, this isn't, this isn't a knock on any employee of the city because they work hard with what they have. However, I've established just the very basis of a plan called the Community Partnership Plan, which pairs already-established Livonia organizations and works with our local university and colleges in order to take some of those smaller service calls and free up DPW for larger projects. There's no reason why someone that volunteers with a pole saw can't trim back some branches, allowing the city to concentrate on those big 40-footers that are about to fall on your car. It's about helping the residents with their everyday concerns because it makes the world of a difference.
Mrs. Perskoni.
Thank you. Something that I am particularly passionate about, and I have already been speaking with officials in the city, is looking at our ordinances and revisiting our ordinances for an overhaul. Many of them are dated, many of them are not even relevant any longer, and many of them are lacking, quite frankly. You know, again, going back to my day job, I'm in court regularly, I see what other communities are doing, I see the ordinances that they have available to them. And we are not keeping up with them. We are, we are behind in that area. And by crafting the ordinances that we need, it will effectively take care of blight issues. It will enhance the beauty of our city and make our city more, it will enhance the curb appeal of our city. And when you do those things and when you take away the blight, when you create that sense of pride in your community, the benefits are just going to, they're just going to have a domino effect. We're going to get more businesses that want to come to Livonia, more people are going to want to live in Livonia, less people are going to want to leave Livonia. So, I hope we can do something like that.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Thank you. Something I talk about often that I don't hear anybody else talking about is workforce development in the building trades. I work in the woodworking manufacturing industry and I'm married to an industrial plumber. He's a member of Detroit Local 98. And they take very good care of our family. I believe that this is a really important investment that our city can make in not only our economy, but our future. We know that there's a shortage of skilled tradespeople, carpenters, electricians, plumbers, woodworkers. And at the same time, we have young people who are looking for meaningful career pathways that are outside of the traditional college path. I think that if we can strengthen the partnerships and break up the silos between our schools and our city, even our local businesses, we could potentially create additional hands-on programs that give students early exposure, mentorship, and training for the skilled trades. I think this not only helps fill the workforce pipeline, but also ensures that our residents have access to good-paying, stable careers right here in our community. And it's about connecting education to opportunity and building a stronger Livonia together. Thank you.
Mrs. McDonald.
Well, you know, when you work in the private sector all your life and you worked in office and building environments and different kind of work settings, you find there are things that work and things that don't work. And I think that what I've seen over the last year in the city is that somewhere along the line, somebody doesn't keep track of something. And that doesn't make sense, but there's a grant that's due to expire this year. And it included ADA bathrooms for six units over at Silver Village. And this particular project is, oops, all of a sudden, now this money's almost gone. So, I think that we need to take a better idea in looking at what needs to, how we run government, because I think that's the biggest priority. We need to take a different approach and take it a little bit of more of a professional level. Thank you.
And Mr. Hooper.
So, probably the one thing that I think that our city government needs to do better, and I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but this is just from my conversations with voters, with residents out there. And they have a trust issue right now. They have a trust issue with all levels of city government, the administration, city council, department heads. They're, they really have, they feel like they, their trust has been failed. I think that we need to work on transparency so that the voters, so that the residents, their trust can be restored in us. And that is, that is really the launchpad to many beautiful things that can happen in this city. So, I'm going to say transparency. Thank you.
All right, we got another audience question here. We'll start with Mrs. McIntyre on this one. What are your views on the health of the business community in Livonia? What are your views of the health of the business community in Livonia? Mrs. McIntyre.
Well, overall, the health of our business community is strong and growing. Like any other community that's been around for a long time, we have retail, we have retail spaces that are vacant. And people will say, "Well, why can't you put this in there or that in there?" Or, "You should, you should have this business instead of going to a green space, go in there." These are, again, I said earlier, these are private properties and private businesses. A city does not dictate what a private property owner does with its business or where a business is going to locate. If someone wants to open a new business and they want to do it in a green space or tear something down and it fits the zoning, it meets all the requirements. something down, and it fits the zoning, it meets all the requirements, they can do that. We always have work to do. Having our industrial quarter, which was brilliant by our founding fathers, really helped stabilize our tax base with respect to businesses. But overall, I think it's good, and I'm going to give a nod to the chamber for all you do.
Thank you. Ms. Reed.
So working with the Spree, with our food vendors and our sponsors, I, overall, I think our businesses want more opportunity for community and connection. Specifically, I'm going to focus on our food trucks that we have at the Spree. A lot of these food trucks have started because they want to eventually have a storefront business. But with the nature of a food truck, you've got to find, you've got to hope someone wants you, hope someone books you, hope they have space for you to drive up and serve people. And I think it would be kind of nice, as a city, if we had maybe a food truck park, or we had a summer series along with our concert, where we would invite these food trucks so that we can help small businesses establish a bigger clientele and to grow so they could eventually move into some of our empty storefronts or restaurants in the city, and we can just keep expanding our business community.
Mr. Brockway.
I don't claim to be an expert in business. I've never run a business, so a lot of my information that I get is just through reviewing information that I find, provided by the city and such. When I look through for commercial office property, Livonia has a 33.72% vacancy rate. And this is first, 2019, when it was a 13%, therefore it has been increasing a little bit. You can see that when you drive down the road, and you see the for lease signs all over the place. There's a 3% industrial vacancy, which is lower than the norm for the area, so that's a positive. But for vacancies, we have to do something different, because there's just a lot of, there's a lot of vacancies, which leads to decay, and it just doesn't look good for the city. You mentioned, you know, blight has been mentioned here. So I have proposed, just doing a little research, what I call the Livonia Local Launchpad. You can find this at BrockwayforLivonia.com. But it's about bringing in, it's about utilizing what we already have in place to bring in new businesses, and also allow entrepreneurs to set up pop-up shops to help kind of inject a little bit of life into these vacant properties. Thank you.
Ms. Persicconi.
Thank you. So this particular issue is near and dear to me as a small business owner right here in Livonia. I do believe I'm pretty dialed in on the local business community here. I'm very active in the Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce, and they do a phenomenal job. And I've been saying that for years. And as a city, from the city's role, though, I think the city can do better. First and foremost, we are doing some good things here right now. We have small business grants available. We have the Pure Potential Grants available. I think we need to do a better job, though, of letting our employers and small businesses out there know that these resources are available. We need to be more proactive as a city. We need to go out to the businesses. We need to see what our businesses need. Then when we, when we figure out what they need, we have to continue to work with them. We've got to work on our partnerships with the learning institutions that we have here in Livonia. We have Schoolcraft in Madonna. We should have a pipeline of a workforce ready to go into these businesses in Livonia and stay in Livonia. Thank you.
Ms. O'Connor.
Thank you. Our business community in Livonia, I think, is strong in many ways, but I do believe that it could use some work, especially when it comes to supporting small businesses. Too often entrepreneurs for small businesses run into unnecessary red tape when they want to open or grow here. If we want to attract and retain talent, we need to make it easier, not harder, for small businesses to succeed in our city. I think this means streamlining the permitting processes, improving communication among our city's departments, and creating a more business-friendly environment. I'm actively working with current councilwoman Carrie Bzinski to work for, toward creating a coalition of small business owners who have recently opened businesses in small surrounding communities, so that we can gather as a group and have active dialogue about the reasons why they chose to open businesses in other communities outside of Livonia, so that we can find those pain points and figure out where to improve. We need to cut barriers for small businesses in our city, because if we're not helping small businesses, then we can't create jobs or strengthen our local economy. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald.
Well, it's pretty apparent to me that the city of Livonia attracts many, many large corporations to come and establish their businesses here. But I think what, which is very healthy, it's very healthy for our city to bring in that tax base and jobs. But like some of my other candidates indicated, that it's the small business owners are the ones that are finding, are struggling. They need our support. They need us to shop in their stores and, you know, you know, give them the support they need. It's, you know, just something else that we need to take care of. Thank you.
Mr. Hooper.
So the conversations that I've had with residents and business owners, there's been a couple times where I've had people approach me, and they talk about the permitting process here. So if you want to start a business, if you need some plumbing work done, or you need whatever, to be able to get a permit, to get an inspection done, can take weeks, can take weeks. And that is unreasonable, especially if you're a small business owner and you're trying to get things accomplished, and you are, you don't have the extra revenue to wait, and you want to hire your employees and get them busy. An old adage is, is business goes where it's welcome and it stays where it's appreciated. We have to, we have to find ways to appreciate the small business owners in our city. And I do believe if we can cut the red tape, we'll end up cutting more red ribbons. Thank you.
Mr. King.
Yeah, I want to circle back. One of the things that nobody talks about is consultants. This city doesn't do anything without calling a consultant. Even the recent proposal for the new police station had $20 million in consultant fees built in. That is just absurd. So I would put an end to that if I was on council. Not one other thing. Dearborn, they're doing something called Blightbusters. I don't like the word blight. So my program is Operation Renovation: Bright Futures, Strong Homes. Please go on my website, in 60 seconds, you can't get the information out to you. House of Denmark, been closed 17 years. There's tools cities can use to address vacant buildings. I have a whole list of them. They'll be on my website as well. Livonia is not small business friendly. Friends of mine who opened businesses and closed them in Livonia have told me that. They are not small business friendly. We have a lot of issues in this city, and I'm looking forward to addressing them. Thank you.
All right. That's all the time we'll have for, oh, I'm sorry. Rebuttal? Yep.
Yeah, and this is just general. This is just general. First of all, we have a phenomenal economic development director in this city, Mark Taramina, and having been on the planning, the zoning board, and having worked with Mark when I was on the other side as a business, we have a thriving business community, in part because of the job Mark does. The idea that we're not friendly to small businesses, as a member of the chamber, I don't think there's a week that goes by that we don't have ribbon cuttings from one or two small businesses. That's my 30 seconds. That goes quickly. Thanks.
All right. That's all we have time for, for the prepared questions tonight. We will now go into closing statements, and we'll begin with Mrs. Reed. One minute for your closing statement, please.
Thank you to the Livonia Westland Chamber, Dan West and his team, and the city of Livonia for having us here in the auditorium. Thank you to my fellow candidates for a great evening of spirited answers and for the past nine months of clean campaigning. I am honored to live in a place that values people of all ages and walks of life. The support I have felt as a working mom has been the most delightful surprise of this entire process. So thank you to everyone who's helped me this far, knocking doors, standing at the polls, attending my fundraisers, donating to my campaign, or just sending me a text to let me know I am doing good. I really appreciate it. We have an exciting six weeks ahead of us, and I want to make sure everyone in Livonia knows me and my campaign. So please visit my website, KayleeforLivonia.com, where you will also find links to my social media pages, endorsements, and background. Word of mouth is the best way to support a candidate, so please tell all of your family, friends, and neighbors to vote for Kaylee.
All right. Mr. Brockway.
Thank you again to the chamber, my fellow candidates, all of the residents and tenants today and at home. I've spent 14 years in federal government service, and one thing I've learned is listening matters. If you're tired of not being heard, vote for someone who truly listens. If you're tired of the same old status quo, vote for someone who can see a new way forward. If you're tired of Livonia missing out on grant opportunities, even with grant writers right here in town, vote for someone who isn't too proud to ask for help. If you're tired of ADA compliance being put on the back burner with little progress made, vote for someone committed to not only advocating, but learning more about real accommodation. If you want libraries with infrastructure they deserve, vote for those who understand the value of reading and learning. If you care about first responders, vote for someone who knows the importance of proper staffing and equipment. If you want all of these things, vote Brockway on November 4th. Thank you.
Ms. Persicconi.
I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce again for hosting tonight's forum, and my fellow candidates that are here for participating. This is, this is critical to our civic discourse. My name is Robyn Persicconi, and I'm proud to be running for Livonia City Council. This city has shaped me from my early days at Taylor Elementary School to my work today as an attorney and community volunteer. I'm Livonia-born, Livonia-raised, and Livonia-educated, and I'm deeply committed to giving back to the community that has raised me and that is currently raising my family. My priorities are clear: fully support public safety, and I'm honored to have been endorsed by all three of our local public safety unions; strengthen our local economy; and invest in and improve our parks and infrastructure, making Livonia a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. I'd be honored to earn your vote on November 4th. Please visit pickrobyn.com or follow my campaign on social media to learn more. Thank you.
Ms. O'Connor.
I want to start by saying a heartfelt thank you to everyone who's supported my campaign thus far. It's been an absolute wild ride and journey coming through here, and I have met some of the most incredible people in this city. I'm honored to be surrounded by such incredible friends and neighbors. Tonight, you've heard about some of Livonia's opportunities and challenges, and my commitment to the city is simple. I will listen, I will lead with transparency, and I will make fiscally responsible and data-driven decisions that will help keep our community strong. I'm proud to call this city home. I'm proud to be raising my children here. This is where I've grown up, and I've invested my career and my home here. I want to ensure that our city remains a place where our residents, including all of my own family and friends, feel safe, connected, and proud, not just today, but for our children moving forward. I have always shown up in service to this community, and whether elected or not, I'll continue to do so. But with your support, I hope to bring my experience, my dedication, my education, and my collaborative spirit to city council. I respectfully and humbly ask for your vote on November 4th. Please reach out to me directly if you have any additional questions, jennieo'connor.org. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald.
Thank you for the Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce and all your hard work for hosting this premier campaign event tonight. The number-one job of council is to be, to listen to the voices of our community. In my opinion, it would feel wrong to make decisions without giving one a chance to speak and to be heard. If faced with a proposal that could spark a debate or concern, I'd ensure that every resident affected knows about it, reaching out in every way possible, so that they have plenty of time to join the conversation, share what matters to them, and shape our path forward together. Help me be the voice of reason and to be your voice on council. Please vote for me, Eileen McDonald, by absentee ballot, early voting if it's available, on the polls on November 4th. I can be reached, my website is citizensforEileenMcDonald.com, and my Facebook page is McDonald for Livonia City Council 2025. Thank you.
Mr. Hooper.
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everybody here that you came out, everybody at home watching. Thank the chamber for hosting this forum. If you want a candidate, if you want a council member that recognizes value, quality, and opportunity, and people, places, and things, then I'm asking for your vote. They say that the rising tide lifts all boats. The rising tide lifts all boats. I believe, I have faith, that real solutions await for Livonia. Practical solutions await. Livonia can have all of the good things. We can have the lowest taxes. We can have thriving arts in our community. We can have a real gathering space. We can prioritize our first responders and take care of them. We can have a robust park system. Livonia, I'm asking you to vote for me, James Hooper, and let us be the rising tide together. Thank you.
Mr. King.
Thank you, Dan, and the chamber, and thank you, folks that come out to see us. Couple of things. If I am on council, you will hear something you never hear: no. I will vote no to wasteful spending, no to consultant fees, no to another purchase just because we have budgeted funds. When I was on the school board, I went through the chart of accounts. Every penny spent, I will do the same thing on council. Voters, you have a rare opportunity. You can pick four brand-new voices, voices that have never been on council, brand-new, new ideas, new perspectives. You have to really think about that. Do your research. And I hope you will go to my kingforlivonia.com, because there's so much stuff you can't get into here. Meet and greet Wednesday, September 24th, at Madonna University, 6:30. I hope you can make that one. Thanks for coming out. I hope you'll give me your vote.
And Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you, Dan. Tonight, we've talked a lot about our city and our city's future. And the truth is really simple. Livonia has enormous potential. But realizing it takes experience, steady leadership, that knows it's not enough to say what you're against. You need to have a plan to achieve what you're for, and I do. We can do great things for our community. We can keep Livonia safe with strong police, fire, and paramedic services. Keep Livonia prosperous by supporting business, streamlining government, and investing in our workforce. We can keep Livonia welcoming with great parks, strong support for all residents, and opportunities for everyone. You know me, you know what I've done on council and as the council president. Please join me again in building Livonia's future. I'm Kathleen McIntyre, candidate for city council. You can always learn more at McIntyre for Council. I appreciated your support on August 5th, and I ask for your consideration again on November 4th. Thank you to the chamber, my fellow candidates, and everyone who's here tonight.
All right. That will conclude our candidate forum. We'd like the audience to acknowledge the candidates for their participation and their willingness to serve in the community. Good luck to each of you in the campaign this fall. The Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce wants to thank our audience for joining us today, who watch the feed on this program. Also, we wish to thank Livonia City Television, its crew, for its efforts to record and rebroadcast this program that will air in the weeks leading up to the election on Tuesday, November 4th. Have a great evening, everyone, and we'll see you soon. Thank you. [applause] Thank you. 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 Thank you.